Changes to the agenda that any of the commissioners see? Yes?
I would just note that on the online packet, there was an error on the Personnel Action Notices report. And so a corrected report has been handed out. There was one employee that had both termination and routine step increase checks. So that's been corrected and it's on your desk.
Yes, and under travel education, I think the travel request for Department Head, Mr. Hill, is he's been invited to be a presenter at the National Conference. Okay, without any objection, then we'll move forward and approve the consent agenda. Then we have our routine business. But if it's all right with the Board at this time, on our agenda, it says nine o'clock, we're scheduled for our state's attorney's annual report. And so Clyde and Abby, we welcome you to our meeting this morning. And we've all had an opportunity to review your report in our packets. It was very complete and concise, but I'd like to share any comments that you may have that you would like to share with us.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good morning.
Morning.
As Don indicated, I think our report is rather detailed and extensive. Insofar as the year of 2013 was concerned, I guess the one comment that I would make is that our office got through it. And the statistics would indicate that nothing has greatly changed since 2012 to 2013. When I say we got through it, I think we did. And I think that those individuals that needed convicting, most all of them did. And I attribute a lot of that which gets done in my office to my four, our four assistants, Kara and Susan, Colleen and Lynn. They make sure that we are on schedule and we kind of work from Monday to Monday because that's when the magistrate court takes place. We've had as high as 146 in magistrate's court. And that takes a lot of work to get ready for it and get the scheduling in place and coordinating with the clerk of courts to make sure that when we do have court, it runs efficiently. The, and I guess when I say my assistants, I forgot the major one, Abby, who you work with much more than you do with me. But the statistics, I guess some of the numbers are down slightly, some are somewhat higher. But overall, it's pretty much consistent with the last three or four years. We did have 99 felony convictions. Forty-six of those were for controlled substances or drugs. That was up from 2012. And the DWI convictions was down somewhat, I believe, from 243 to 227. The one thing that perhaps you did pick out of the report is that the average percent by weight of alcohol of the 227 people that were convicted was a point one eight three. That, as I'm sure you are aware, is twice the legal limit, the legal limit being a zero eight. So it, to get that kind of an average, takes a lot of very high blood tests. And the felony DWIs are down, or was down in 2013. Perhaps that can be attributable to the 24/7 program. We would hope so, because when you have a second offense conviction, which you have to have before you get a third, most all of those individuals that are convicted of second offense DWIs have to participate in the 24/7 program for a number of months or up to a year. Domestic violations, whether it's simple assault domestic or disorderly conduct domestic, was slightly higher, but not any great increase. So everything, as far as the conviction goes, stayed pretty much constant. The workload didn't. As to the 46 felony drug convictions, most of those, you're involved with a suppression motion based on an alleged illegal search or seizure or something illegal. The defense attorneys allege that requires an evidentiary hearing, then most likely a brief and findings of fact and conclusions of law on that. And I do the evidentiary hearings in most part. And Abby does the heavy load in that she does the briefing. All of that takes considerable time. And then we had another issue in 2013, and that was a Supreme Court of the United States case, which says that perhaps our implied consent or lack thereof wherein our law says that if you drive and there's reason to believe you're under the influence, you have to give blood, you don't have a choice. And Supreme Court in the Missouri case said that may not be correct. I think if I heard the news right, that's on appeal to our Supreme Court, is being heard today in Vermillion. So we may get a decision on that. We had lots of evidentiary hearings as a result of that. And that takes briefing and a hearing and all of that. So that added to our workload this year. It also involves many court-appointed attorneys who the county pays for, as you know. And we don't have a public defender system here in Brookings County. Whether that would be economically advisable, I don't know. What we have is working, but it does involve a lot of court-appointed attorney's fees. But all of those that were paid out in 2013, we did recover 42.6% of that which was expended, which I think is good. The circuit, Third Circuit average is 38%. So we were above that in recovering of court-appointed attorney's fees. Some of those not recovered as a result of perhaps court-appointed attorney's fees for someone who is here illegally. And when they're convicted and once they have served their sentence, they're returned to wherever they came from and we're never going to recover those court-appointed attorney's fees. Those not recovered become a lien, but recovering is somewhat difficult. But I do think that the 42% is good and would be well above the state average for recovery. So overall, I think the office has ran efficiently and effectively and we got the work done. And if there are any questions, I'd try and answer them.
Thanks Clyde. Any questions from Board members? Tom?
Clyde, the new public safety law, I'm not sure what the name of the act is. How's that working? And do you foresee any additional county costs through the Sheriff's Department or incarceration or just how's that working and what do you think the future brings to Brookings?
Well, I think the purpose behind it is to keep individuals that are convicted from going to the penitentiary to save the state money. And instead of using the penitentiary, to use the county jails for detention time. That's only been in effect since the first of July of last year. I don't know that I have noticed that our jail population has increased that much. There are a number of offenses, felony offenses, for which if a person is convicted, there's presumed probation. I haven't noticed that that's changed much. Those that the statute says there is presumed probation, I think our judges were giving probation before the law was enacted. So I question whether it's going to have much of a financial effect on the county and its costs. Our jail population has maintained relatively constant and that's kept going since the first of July when the law went into effect.
Okay. Any other questions for Clyde? Well Clyde, thanks for coming in and visiting with us this morning and giving your annual report. It's always a very complete, concise report and enjoy it and enjoy hearing your comments as well.
Well, that report is due to the way that my staff takes care of matters and so I can attribute that to them. I think Abby would have some comments on juvenile matters.
Just briefly, I could summarize a little bit about the juvenile numbers. And again, you have a very detailed report in front of you. Thanks in entirely a large part to my assistant, Suzie. But the trend that I've seen with juveniles, a slight increase, not dramatic in the numbers, but we are seeing the numbers go up as the years progress. The nature of the offenses have become steadily more egregious, I guess I would say. There are some offenses that we haven't seen in prior years that we're starting to see that does cause some concern, but we take them and we deal with them as we need to. You'll also note in there, a number of the juveniles do end up getting committed to the Department of Corrections. That number has also stayed fairly steady, fairly consistent with years prior. I would just note for the Commission's information that when we commit a juvenile to the Department of Corrections, that is ultimately our last resort through the court process, through working with court services and community resources. They utilize all other opportunities that they can before we have to get to that step with a juvenile, but in some instances, it is appropriate. I would just note also for the Commission's benefit, I work very closely with the School Resource Officer, Joel Fishbacher. He and I are probably on each other's speed dial, we talk so frequently, but I have a great working relationship with him and we coordinate as much as possible to keep things running smoothly within all the school districts or the schools here in Brookings. And then also, I guess in terms of the mental commitments, I just attached a very brief chart for your benefit, just since we've discussed it a number of times over the past year, in terms of how many we actually started, how many were committed. You'll see that 34 actually went through and got formally committed this past year. And that is an increase. I believe last year, we were at about the 25-27 mark, or 2012, I should say. So we are seeing an increase in that number as well. I would just want to thank Clyde. I have, you know, been at the office now for almost coming on a year and a half and I absolutely love my job. I love what I get to do every day. I have an excellent mentor, colleague that I get to work with. And the staff in that office is some of the best people I've ever worked with. And it is a very efficient operating office. I can certainly tell you that. So if you have any questions about any of my numbers or the juvenile or mental commitments, I'm happy to answer those.
I guess just a question on the teen court. I see you had 17 referrals to teen court and, you know, we try to fund through the Boys and Girls Club that portion of the, what we feel is important. And I think Mark was very supportive of teen court and it appears to be that you're using it. Is that number up or down? Or is that, I mean, is it hard to schedule or easy to schedule? Or, I mean, it takes a little preparation to put somebody, you know, have someone go through that process too. It just isn't something you just do without coordination of a lot of things. So is that 17 number consistent with past years, do you know?
Certainly. Well, what you'll see on that chart is that there were 25 referrals. That means I referred 25 cases to teen court, but then 17 actually completed the program successfully. If they don't complete the program, the case gets referred back to me for formal prosecution. Those numbers are pretty average. The 20 to 30 range is what Mark had been utilizing the past few years. I work, again, pretty closely with the teen court coordinator, Kelsey Thorson, with the Boys and Girls Club. And we are always thinking about ways that we could utilize that program. Are there different types of cases we could be sending there? What are more things we could be doing? For the most part, my policy, and this is carried on from what Clyde and Mark had established, I believe, is at this point, we are only referring first-time offenders so the juvenile can have no prior offenses. And typically, some of the, what we would consider minor offenses, a petty theft where there may not be any restitution that's needed, or underage consumptions, a first-time offense on that, where there's a very low PBT reading, things of that nature. The more serious offenses, and certainly any felony offense, I feel that those do need to be brought into juvenile court, that that juvenile needs to see a juvenile court judge. But like I said, I am working with the coordinator. We are always trying to think outside of the box. Is there an appropriate offense that we could be sending there that would benefit from the program?
Just kind of give me an example. How would you fail teen court? I mean, the eight that didn't make it through that were referred, what do they start out with the process? They don't follow through? They don't complete? I guess just briefly, if you can just tell me the process, how you wouldn't make it through the teen court process?
I would say there's two ways. When I get a report from an officer and I decide it's appropriate for teen court, I send it on to the coordinator. The juvenile has to admit guilt at that time and acknowledge what they did and be willing to proceed with the program. Some juveniles aren't. So right there, you're failing. You're not willing to be in the program, you're going to come back. The other way is you go through the program, you sit through teen court, you get your sentence, and you fail to complete the terms of the sentence. So I believe it's a 180-day program. You have a number of things you have to complete. And if you fail to complete any of those in that time, you don't pass the program and it comes back to me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, both of you. Okay, moving on to our routine business, we've got a couple, few minutes here before we have a specific timed portion of our agenda today is the approval of the claims. The chair would entertain a motion.
Tomo, second.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Discussion? Questions? Any staff comments regarding the claims? If not, please call a roll.
Wyse?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number B is our department head reports. And to our department heads, we do have a regularly scheduled agenda item at 9:30. So we don't want you to shorten your reports if you've got something to acknowledge to us, but we may have to interrupt for a brief moment if that happens to be your situation. Mike, you're in the back there, you want to step up? We'll start on the other end this time.
Good morning.
Morning.
A couple of different things have come up and I just thought I'd come up and share with you. One of the things is that on the VA side, they had the Writers Conference up on campus on Sunday night. It was an invitation type thing. Brought in a bunch of the people that are on the Midwest Writers Conference Board and their thing they're covering this year is veterans. And there was a lot of combat veterans that were there that were sharing their books with them. We also saw the movie, it's Homecoming, which is a very good movie. The VFW here has purchased a copy of it and I think a number of you may have seen it already. The other thing that we were covering too is the RAV program, Reach All Veterans. Talked with Secretary Zimmerman again about that. Every county is given a list of 100 veterans to contact each month. Our office, with the different things going on, we're about a quarter of the way through that list that we just got last week. So we're working on it. We're also going to go back through and see some of our records. A lot of the people on the list, we already do see. We have fairly active office down there. And the veterans seem to, you know, and part of this is with Lionel and Irene being here so long, most of them already know where we are and the different things that we do provide for them. But it is also kind of nice just to get ahold of them again and thank them again for their service and have a quick rundown on that. The other thing is on the 20th, I did go to the conference in Pierre for the welfare conference. One of the things that they are doing is we're going to be rewriting our manual again. And they are going out and looking for different people to get involved with rewriting the different sections on that. Last time that it was done was 2010. And I know at that time Lionel and also Mark Croweville were quite active in a few of the different parts on that rewrite on that one. I've been talking to some people and they have, a couple of them have kind of asked me how much involvement I want in it. And right now, I'm still trying to decide. But it might be something that I'll have to come to you guys to ask for the time off to go meet with the committee when they have a project going on. We did approve, at the meeting, we did approve to get travel funds out of the State Association. So it wouldn't be anything coming back to the county as far as expenses on that. The other thing that I thought was real exciting at the training that we had was dealing with the Affordable Care Act. And they did go through, we did a little more work on the website, mainly to find out if someone has not enrolled and would have been eligible for the Affordable Care Act, it does give you a rundown of how much it would cost them for their premiums. And if they chose not to enroll, then they made the choice of not getting the insurance. And then we would have to deny their request based on their choices. So that's why I guess today, and I guess for everyone here, and just to let you know that, you know, the 30th, 30th, 31st, I'm going through the number, how many days are in this month, but the deadline is coming up. And if there is anyone out there that has chosen not to enroll, because, you know, one, you're not, you're bulletproof, or two, you don't think you have the money, you have to enroll so that we can have that, at least when, if we see that you have enrolled and the premiums were too high, then yeah, we can still be held liable for those bills. But if you chose not to enroll and to find out whether or not those premium amounts were something that you could cover, then it's your choice not to have coverage. And that's the thing that I really want to stress today.
Okay, questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. That's good information, though. Mr. Hill, coming from the west to the east? Morning, Bob.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Very quickly, the trailer park south of town, the new owner has contacted me and I know this board's been contacted over some water issues. And he explained to me that they went in and they think that they probably found what the major issue with the water pressure at least was. And that he's addressing that as far as the sewer problems. He said that's a little more long-term fix to do that, but he is aware of the issues. We had a discussion on what I felt our issues was with the county and him and, you know, the people that's been coming in our office and talking to us. And so I guess time will tell, but I think it's looking up out in that particular area. And our National Weather Service spotting training has been changed. Last couple of weeks ago, I told you it was on May 1st. It's actually going to end up being on May 5th because of a conflict with the Weather Service. I attended a fire meeting earlier last week. We are having, our building code program is being inspected right now by a group called Community Hazard Mitigation Services. And I believe the Commission got a letter on that, probably in your packet, that they're down there inspecting that right now. And the Local Emergency Planning Committee, which my office is the secretary for, they have applied for a hazmat plan grant to update the hazmat plan. And First District will be the one that rewrites that plan. And April 16th, we have a tabletop exercise over at the Emergency Operations Center. That's in practice for our May 15 statewide EOC exercise. And we'll be using the Emergency Operations Center. We'll try to get the Commission over there to see the Emergency Operations Center as soon as we get it all set up. And the tabletop should be a good exercise to, we're going to bring different players in for the actual tabletop and then the statewide will probably be different players. But I want to get the directors of some of these departments in to the tabletop so they can see what we're actually talking about. Because we get so compartmentized in the county that you only worry about your little department. You don't realize if a tornado comes and wipes out half the city of Brookings, it won't be, you know, it won't be business as usual. And we have to make it work. So at least that's our plans. Any questions?
Questions for Bob?
I've got a couple of other things on the agenda later today, it looks like, so.
Yeah.
Take care.
Thank you, Bob. I don't know how brief the next report would be, probably not that brief from historical memory, so. Very brief? Well, you've got one minute.
Good morning. Just to report on equalization boards and how they're going. Last week was the week that the local boards all convened as local boards. Out of 32 entities, I think we have under seven appeals. County Board is looking very, very light so far, but they have until next Tuesday to produce written evidence to us that they wish to appeal. So that's, and county boards again are going to be April 15th at nine o'clock. Any questions?
Thanks. Okay, we're, by the time I get done talking, it'll be 9:30. Without objection, we'll take a brief recess from our regularly scheduled meeting business items and we'll move into the public hearing that is advertised. We'll call a public hearing to order. The reason for this hearing is any testimony and discussion and then action on an application made by West Oak Pub, the name of, under the name of Shelley Rankin, for retail on-off sale of malt beverage license at DeBoer's Edition, Lot 12, Government Lot 6, Section 8, 11151. It's about eight and a half acres in Oakwood Township. So at this time, the Board would like to hear from anyone that would be an opponent to the issuance of this license. Are there any opponents that wish to speak to the issuance of this license? If not, we would ask that proponents present here and want to address this issue to come forward at this time. Any proponents that wish to make a comment? Okay, we'll bring the discussion to the Board. And I typically will ask our local law enforcement officer, Mr. Stanwick, if he has any comments in regards to law enforcement issues regarding this license.
I don't have any. I met with Shelley Rankin, her husband, and another individual Friday in my office to visit about some of the issues that came up with the last people that ran it and just to kind of fill them in and stuff. And And, you know, just talked about that we do stings and those, and those types of things. And they must run a bar now, or have run a bar, and they, and I was interested if they're gonna have TAM training for their bartenders, and, and their bartender's gonna have that training from the state, so. No, they're very, very receptive to, and I just thought maybe we could, if I let them know what our complaints were in the past, might be able to head those, those types of complaints off now, so. I think it's gonna be a great asset to that area. It sounds like they wanna do a good job, and, and I think it's gonna be great for that area.
Okay. Any questions, Marty? With that, we'll close the comments, and we will move to the action, and the chair would entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Krogman, second by Wyeth. Any discussion, board members? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Next we have on our agenda is Finance Office Report, and Stacy, I'll turn it over to you. Oh, we gotta finish Department Heads, I'm sorry, thank you for, we'll move down to Victoria. Do you have anything for the good of the order?
For the finance.
Okay, you're here for the finance. Marty? Didn't mean to ignore you folks, but I kinda did, didn't I?
Just, we had a, the staff had a busy weekend, it was pub crawl weekend, and, you know, sometimes pub crawl is busier than some hobo day nights, and so staff was rather busy, and I did bring in an extra person to kinda help with that, and I had two deputies on federal overtime, two that, that assisted with the city. So we had 18 total that came in over pub crawl, the Saturday to early, you know, early Friday morning to early Sunday morning, and there was nine DWIs, three simple assaults, there were some miscellaneous underage consumption and so forth. Those are the, just the ones that come to jail, and, and, you know, there's maybe citations and those things out there, but otherwise it went rather smoothly, I guess, if you wanna consider the, I always say, these are the dumb ones that get arrested, the most obvious. Anyway, so, at the present time, we have 23 inmates in jail. I have 25 on PBT and 25 on SCRAM at the present time, so, you know, we've increased a little bit on our daily population, not, not a lot, it's been around that 17 to 18, so it's increased a, a few there. Also, we did a compliance alcohol check, did 10, 10 businesses in the county, two of those businesses failed, those two that failed are, are in municipalities. All the ones that were checked out in the county is, is passed, so I thought that was, that was great, that sometimes the ones in the county that are out in the, in the boondocks a little bit, you know, they're a little more vulnerable for maybe some nut, but they, they did a good job, so. And we also, we always, when they pass or fail, we go in right away and tell them. Then we do with a follow-up letter. And some of these businesses that have passed got their letters up on their walls showing that they've passed, so I think that's, you know, they're, they're proud that they're doing a good job, so, anyway. And we do, we do compliance checks every, every three months, and we don't do the same ones, we, we rotate, so they're, they're familiar with what we do. We don't try to trick them or anything, a 21-year, a 20-year-old goes in and asks to buy alcohol and, and wait to ask for their ID, and you'd be surprised, the ones that failed, he didn't show the ID, and they asked, well, are you from this area? And he goes, yeah. What's your mother's name? Well, my mom lives just east of town and whatever, and, and they go, well, you must be okay then, and then they sell, so they don't look at the ID, so. But anyway, other than that, our last snowstorm, I thought was over, but we had not too many problems with, it was a pretty snow, if anything, so.
Yeah. This time of the year, I don't know if any of it's very pretty.
Coming down 77, it was a pretty snow. That's all I got.
Thanks, Marty. Any questions for Marty? Thanks a lot, Marty. Gary, you're here, you're on the agenda a little bit later, in a specific time, did you have anything beyond that that you wanted to bring forward to us? Okay? Okay, thank you. Now we can move on to Stacy and, and the Finance Office Report.
The report for February is in your packet. Routine report, I don't know if you have any questions on that, it's just the be-it-noted items that we have from month to month that are on there, so. If there's anything out of the ordinary.
Any questions for Stacy on the report? Always very thorough and complete, Stacy, you do a good job.
I think I provided, you, I think we discussed at the last meeting, the fund balance, the rollover amounts from the year end, from the end of 2013 that rolled into 14, and I provided an extra report this time to show you those amounts.
And I wanted to thank you for that, I did, I did say, I'm trying to find it here again, it's the end of the report, I believe.
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, thank you for that, I, it.
Yeah, does that, did it make sense?
Yeah, absolutely, that's exactly what we were looking at, to see where we're at, and, yep.
Any other questions or comments? For Stacy? Thanks, Stacy.
Yep.
Okay, item D is action to approve Resolution 1411, Plats, Lots 2A and 2B in the southwest quarter of Section 22, 11049. We'll bring Mr. Hill here and give us a little explanation.
Yes, on this particular plat, it's, is a, it's taken a large non-conforming lot, and basically divided it in two. There was, the, the Planning Commission heard this particular plat, and the, the people that applied for the plat a couple different times, and it's been determined by the Planning Commission that there was a residence there during the Great Depression, late, early 30s, up until right after World War II's, when the, the residence disappeared. And it's next to the, near the gun, gun club, over, to give you an idea where it's at, on US Highway 14. The other issue with it is, you know, you're dividing a 15-acre lot, now you got two little baby lots, the, the housing eligibility is only on one of the lots. So the Planning Commission requested that, that the County Commission approved the plat as long, with the stipulation that the landowner puts a deed restriction on that, on the second lot that doesn't have the building eligibility. That way, in the future, when they come into the zoning office and we see a small lot, and someone tells us there is a house there, then we'll know, know, the, the house is already up in the proper location, and, you know, and we think that it would, would clear everything up. The landowners agreed to it, Mr. Westall contacted our office yesterday, they're working on it, they don't have it yet, so what I would request is that you approve the plat contingent on that deed restriction being turned in, and.
Comments from board member?
Is, is that then part of the motion, do we need to make that?
Well, you would have to make that, I mean, that, that's what the, the Planning Commission has sent to, to the County Commission with the request that, that you guys approve the, approve the plat, but that it be contingent, that that deed restriction be put on that second lot.
For discussion purposes, I would make that motion, or maybe Tom, you sat down the board, if you wanna make it, or?
Sure, I'll, I'll second it, but, for discussion.
Yeah. Question. Why are they splitting it then?
Yeah.
The, the person that wants to buy the lot only wants to buy five acres, I believe it is, with the smaller lot. The other people, he owns farmland and his pivots there, with his big irrigating pivot. He does, he only wants to lose enough land to, to let the guy build his house, and, and the rest of the land's gonna be put in the farmland, that's why they have no problem with the deed restriction.
Okay, for my information, the motion now reads to be moved to approve. Do we need to make an amendment? Or as amended?
I thought you had it.
Or with the condition, okay.
On, on which lot? Is it B?
Okay.
Where's the house gonna go on? Is which one, A or B? Five acres.
The five acre lot.
So the deed restriction will go on Lot 2B? So you can't build a house on?
Correct.
The 10 acres.
Would that be spelled out?
Would that be spelled out in the, the condition that it's on Lot 2B?
Correct. The deed restriction would only be on Lot 2B.
Okay, that's 2B.
The deed restriction being placed on five acre lot 2B?
No, 10 acre.
I believe it's a 10 acre.
Yeah. And, and do we need to state that the deed restriction is not being able to build a house on? I think, don't we?
I think, I think we should be as explicit as we can.
Yeah. I mean, there's different types of deed restrictions, I guess, you can put anything in a deed to restrict the use of the property, I think we need to put in there that.
Yeah, it, it can't be improved? Does, does improvement cover?
Well, you can.
Then you can't build a shed.
Exactly, so I would say residential.
Correct.
Residential property.
Cannot, cannot have a residence built on it. They can have, obviously, put a shed or, or agricultural-type building on it.
Commissioner Wyeth? Well, I, I don't know how many of these you do, in deed restrictions, and I don't know how many, Ms. Howard has had, probably not any yourself, but is there any legal precedent, or is it very common? Is it within our authority, all those kinds of things, to do a deed restriction like this?
What, what's your question? I'm sorry.
Question, is it within our authority, and we have any, do you have any?
No, I have no issue with this. I have, I have no issue with this. Mr. Hill and I have already discussed this, and it's.
No problem.
Right.
Okay, that's all I.
Okay. Dennis?
So I, I guess that motion then, with the deed restriction of not being allowed to build a residential lot on the 10 acres, that is probably spelled out. Stacy? Okay?
And that was the motion I seconded.
Yes, that was it.
Okay.
And, and the discussion in the, there was, this is not, because it doesn't have 35 acres, that we're not gonna allow this to be built on here?
Correct, sir. By, by our zoning ordinance, we do allow people to build houses on quote-unquote "old homesteads." So it was determined that in Lot 2A, there was a homestead there in the past.
Correct.
But then when you take away 2B, the, the Planning Commission was really concerned that someone would come in at a later date, and someone at my office may accidentally give a permit, because it's a 10-acre lot, and they assumed that there was a house there or something, so. With the deed restriction, that would prevent that from happening. And if someone purchases that land, 'cause Lot 2B could be purchased separately from the 160 that, that the irrigator's on, if someone bought that thinking they was gonna build a house, then the deed restriction, when they bought the residence, would strictly state that they cannot, so.
But let me ask you this, then. Say somebody bought 160 acres, and now they have enough land to be able to build on Lot 2B because it is combined, are they able to do that?
We would, as long as they took it and absorbed it into a 30, basically vacated plat 2B and added it to the 160, by all means, they would be able to do whatever they want.
So they'd have to vacate it, but what concerns me is deed restrictions, you know, and there's been different opinions from different attorneys, they live forever for the land, and some say, no, they're only for the owner, and, and we deal with those in the real estate, you know, and property in Brookings, and I know there's different questions on that. We were taught that it stays with the property for life. So if somebody would have, so you're saying somebody then would have to vacate Lot 2B, or would they have to re-plat the whole works?
Well, that would be up to the Register of Deeds and State Law, is it the procedure, but we wouldn't, we would never be able to be allowed for Lot 2B to have a house stand alone with it. They would have to, 2B would have to be attached to a larger, in this case, 25 more acres to allow a house to be constructed.
But Ryan makes an excellent point.
By all means.
Even if they incorporated another 15 acres, you're not gonna develop in this 10, because there's that deed restriction.
Even if you have enough.
Even if you have enough, that deed restriction stays with, with that legal description. Now, at some point in the future, if this board were to concur and remove the deed restriction, I think it's about the only way you get rid of it.
Or if you vacate the, if you vacate the plat, and it, and it absorbs into a larger land, I believe, I'm not a legal person by any stretch, but, as long as it remains 2B, it would not be a buildable lot, is the impression that I got.
That's something for the legal folks to figure out, I'm not sure. Any other comment? But Ryan, I appreciate your concerns, and, and you and I have sat through the same continuing education classes where they talk about this, and you put a restriction on, it's there.
And, and this issue will be brought up as, as we complete the comprehensive plan and start to look at the zoning ordinance, we have got to contact other counties, such as Collington County, we're getting these deed restrictions from First Planning District, who deals with Collington County. This is the first one that we've dealt with like, like this in this area. So it's gonna take more research on my part, and I'm gonna, you know, obviously with the Deputy State's Attorney's Office, to figure out how we want the language, do we want the language, or whatever. In this case, by it being a, not bound by the, the board requesting it, and the landowner agreeing to it, we, we feel it's a fit.
Okay.
Bob, just so I understand how this ended up, this 15 acres was always a separate parcel to the 100, taken off of the 160?
It, it, August, 8 August, 1963, it was subdivided.
Into 15 acres?
Into 15 acres.
Okay.
I, I wasn't around then, and especially doing zoning, I was alive, but I wasn't doing zoning then, so I don't, we don't know why it was.
It was taken out, but, but it's a different owner than the other part, so then that owner now is coming in.
Correct.
Validating that there was a house there, and, but he doesn't want the whole 15 acres, he only needs the five, and, and whoever's farming wants that to be kept.
Wants to keep the irrigate, the land.
Kept that separate, so they came in to do it this way, otherwise he'd have just did the whole 15 acres and built on the area. Okay, that, I was just wondering why he wanted to divide it, and I guess it was a, and I remember the, Mr. Hill, I think this is the conversation we had when he was in there that time, so, okay.
Okay.
This is out by the gun club, and there's another lot already there where the gun club is, so it's been divided before. That'd be like Lot 1, that's the gun club, if you're wondering where it's at.
Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, number E, is action to approve Resolution 1412. This is the Lot 1 Aurora Substation addition in the northwest quarter of 3611049. And we've got the documentation in our packet, for purpose of discussion, chair would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Wyeth?
Second.
Second by Falcon. Discussion? Staff, you have any comments on this one?
This is a Western Area Power Authority substation that they want to, the, the need for electricity in Brookings County has increased, so the federal government has purchased additional land, and the way they do it, they require a plat, and so they brought this to our board, the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission heard it and forwarded it on to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any questions?
Was there any, because you put in a substation, was there any people in attendance that were against it?
No, sir, not, not at the planning meeting.
Other questions, comments? If not, please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Take care.
Yes.
Were you, was the board wanting the Finance Officer to go through the rest of the Finance Report with the County Investment Report that was included in your packet, or are you guys, I don't know if you wanted to go through that for the public too? It was after the actual Finance Officer's report, she's got, she does it, what, twice a year, Vicki?
Yeah, it was included.
I just didn't know if you wanted to bring it up for everybody else to see or not.
Well.
Separate document.
Board members, you wanna review it with her?
I'd like to, does she have, does any comment on our investments? Yeah, I think it's, I'd like to hear.
Okay.
How we're doing with investment.
I only say that 'cause Vicki refrained from the Department Head reports, because I think she was planning on talking about this.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vicki, I thought you were just.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, it's, the investment policy was in your packet, and we go by the loan dollars that the banks have with Brookings County, and we get that back, and then we divide the money markets according to what the loan dollars are. with Brookings County, and we get that back, and then we divide the money markets according to what the loan dollars are. So it's pretty self-explanatory there, but if you have any questions, I also put in there where the CDs are located, when the CDs become due, and all that information with the checking accounts and everything. It's got the interest rates and pretty much everything, so I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I just noticed it doesn't quite jive. Suppose it takes a while to bring it into line with the loans percentage? You know, their, their percentage of the loan doesn't quite jive, but the percentage of...
It should.
Cash. Well, they're off some, but I mean, it would take a while to get it sorted, you know, I assume.
You're probably looking at the one with the, are you looking at the ones with the CDs? Because it should jive. The loan amounts, it just goes back to just the money markets. And then the CDs are something that we go according to what they are willing to pay. But the money market should jive with the percentages.
So this first column is based on the investment breakdown, right? And then the second column is based on your bidding for CDs?
Yes.
So this is the total, and then, so the percentage on the right won't match the loan amounts because the CDs are bid on auction or online bidding?
Right. The money markets are the only things that change in this investment policy. And the CDs become due different times during the year, and whoever bids the highest gets a CD. So it's not according to the investment policy, just the money markets are.
So you have, you have percentage after money market, then it would mirror the loan?
Yes, yep. Because after we do this investment policy, it doesn't match. So we have to take money out of certain money markets and put it in others to match the investment policy. And that is what is shown on the sec, yeah, no, the one without a graph. Yeah, that shows what the differences are, that we took money out of a certain bank and put it in another bank. That is the withdrawals and the deposits that we made to make it match with the percentages. Okay?
Do you have to make any adjustments to the policy now that two of the banks are consolidating? Does that make a difference?
Well, when we did this, they were still separate, and I have talked to them. Next year, they will be putting a bid in for just one bank. And it would probably still be the same percentage, but it would not show both banks on there. And we did the same thing when, like, you'll see up there, we had White included in, with it before, and now we don't have them included in the investment policy because they're in with First Bank and Trust. But the CDs that White had are still, they're in with, with First Bank and Trust, but they're still, were in the same number CD that the bank had in White, so that's why that's still listed on there.
And nothing has changed in state law for us to be, any concern of our investment policy or anything to do. I know we had this discussion last week at our work comp board director's meeting with investments, and, you know, certain things have to be tied to state law, and so there's nothing that's changed in peer that we can...
No.
Have any more flexibility than what we do.
No, you're just allowed to have it in local banks or in the fit out in peer, which they don't have as good a rates. That is a lot of times used when there isn't as many banks in the county, or if there isn't a bank in the county, that they will go to that and get a better rate. But with as many banks as we have, we have better rates than what they do in peer, so... But nothing has changed with how we can invest the money.
This looks like the trim for the next two, three years is going to be where it's at today, where it looks. It looks like there's a little upward swing to it, but most of it is going to be pretty flat for the next couple of years.
Right. The last CD that we renewed was at point four zero, so it's not very good, but I guess that's the way the trend is right now. And also included, too, I put the credit card usage, and Don, you can look at that, too. That kind of shows us, you know, like, if you would have anything through NACO, but it does tell you the number of transactions, the dollar amounts, and what it is, what the fee was paid by the customer. So over a year, the customers in Brookings County paid thirteen thousand one eighty-four sixty-two. So if we could get that down, that would be great, but that is what it is at the present time.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully they can accomplish that. That would be a big help for our citizens.
It would be, it would be. And we are continually having more credit cards and debit cards all the time, and these are both debit and credit cards, I should tell you on that. There is a charge for both debit and credit cards, but both of them are being used.
Okay.
How's that jive with the actual cost, our cost that we have to send in? Our credit card cost? That's about point zero three, which is close to some?
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything to use the credit card, but it does cost the clients or customers a convenience fee of about three percent, but it...
We don't have to pay a merchant?
We don't have to pay anything, no.
Oh, really? Jeez, I wish it would have been a bank, a government, and then...
Yeah, that's what we have to pass on because we can't absorb those fees according to state law.
Okay, if there is, okay. You have no merchant fees, but we're charging the customer?
We don't have any fees that we pay to this third party, the GovTel that we go through. But they get their fees from the customer, and that is the fee that you see up there. That is paid by the customer.
And that's done at the transaction?
It is, and it's, when you run the transaction, it tells them exactly what their fee will be. They can accept it or decline, so we tell every customer that comes in what their fee will be, and we've had many of them decline because if they write a check or pay cash, they have no fee. But it is told right up front what the fee is, so, and most of them are willing to pay the fee.
And debit cards are more?
Debit cards are a little less than credit cards, but it still averages out about three, three and a half percent.
Okay.
So...
Other questions? Vicky, thanks for that good report, and I apologize for...
No, that's no problem.
Not calling on you explicitly for this portion of it because, albeit, we've, we reviewed it, and it's in our packet. It was probably good for at least our viewing audiences to have the opportunity to see how our investments are going.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Well, Gary, you're pretty close on time here. At this time, we've got a scheduled time of ten AM to discuss the pesticide applicator permit information update. Jonathan, you're here. Welcome to our meeting. Jonathan, engineer two in the South Dakota DENR, and so I'll ask you and Gary to come forward or... And bring us up to date and discuss it, whatever you feel it is, it's important that we need to hear.
Well, thank you for inviting me out here today.
I would ask you this, especially for our, our viewing audience. If you would speak, our microphones are quite directional. So if you would speak in, there you go, pull it towards you a little bit, and speak into the mic, tell them who you are, and then proceed.
I'm Jonathan Hill. I'm here from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. I came out because I heard that there was some communication last week about pesticide application, and had some concerns and questions that might be able to help address today. So I guess I would like to know what questions any of you have or concerns, so I can either bring those up and discuss about them.
I guess the reason why Jonathan contacted me was the information that the board was discussing regarding mosquito spraying, and that's what he came to talk to you guys about today, so...
And, and some of our department head concerns and ours were the, the possibility of a looming fine if we did this, if there was a citizen complaint, and so maybe you could address the permitting process and how that all works, and, and if, you know, if this is not an issue. Please tell us.
Well, this permit came into effect because basically EPA got sued. All the pesticide application used to only be covered under Federal Pesticide, Phungocid and Rendocid Act, FIFRA. And EPA got sued, and because of that court case, now through the Clean Water Act, any pesticide application to waters of the state needs to have permit coverage. So South Dakota, because we are a delegated state from EPA, we're required to issue that permit.
Could I stop you for a minute? What does a delegated state mean?
If a state is not delegated, that means EPA is in control for issuing all the permits, doing enforcement, anything like that. Since South Dakota is a delegated state, we issue the permits, we deal with the permities, we're, we're in charge. EPA can still step in if there's a really big issue, but that's, that's pretty rare. They do have, they do have authority in South Dakota for tribal land. But any other land, DENR is the one that has authority. So when we were writing the permit, we pretty much agreed that FIFRA was doing a great job, and that nothing more really needed to, to occur to protect the waters of the state. So we tried to write the permit to, to match what FIFRA already requires. There are certain requirements in the Clean Water Act that we have to have in the permit. There has to be some sort of reporting, some sort of monitoring. The applicator has to do some inspections on their own, so we have some of those requirements in the permit. But really, as long as they were already doing what they had to do under that FIFRA, there are no additional requirements unless they apply to a certain amount of water. And we have that threshold set high enough that since we issued the permit, we've only had one applicator need to submit that in and report.
So you're saying that, now if you're treating the water, which is waters of the state, which some municipalities will treat ponds and things that flow into, what we're doing is strictly ace, we're not doing that for larvicide. We're strictly spraying mist into the air.
Right.
That is not going to be, that you don't see that as being possible contamination of waters of the state? I mean, do we don't have to, I mean, because, because that, if we're spraying in different areas, you know, for, for us to be able to test every possible water of the state?
Well, I'll address it on a few different fronts. If you're applying pesticide to water or to where it will get into water to effectively target the pest, then the permit is, would, would be in effect. So if you're applying to a field, the permit doesn't matter. But if you're misting over a lake, then that would be covered by the permit.
Okay, what's, what's your definition? I mean, over a lake to me would be if you, you'd almost have to fly it. I mean, or if you're next to a lake and it drifts out into the lake, is that considered?
Right, yeah. If, if the, if the target area is on, in or over water, then, then the permit would take effect. If you're spraying near water and some accidentally kind of drifts over into the water, that's off-target spray drift and is exempt from the Clean Water Act, which is where the, the permit comes from. But if you're applying to the water to target the pest, then it's, then it come into effect.
Well, in our previous discussion, what got my attention was personal liability by our applicator and by, and to the county. What are we saying here, everything that's...
The, the whole basis of the permitting program is to protect against lawsuits, really is where it comes from. The permit says that if you are following the permit, you are in compliance with the Clean Water Act. And like said previously, we try to keep the requirements in the permit matching what applicators were already doing under, under FIFRA.
So in essence, our concerns for spraying, and, and we don't, we can't obviously spray the whole county, but, but often we spray the developments that are near the lakes and, and other housing developments within the county. So what you're saying is the permitting process is not as in-depth as we had had earlier thought?
Right, right. And I talked to your applicator a little bit yesterday, and I like where he was coming from with wanting to do a lot of testing, seeing what kind of species of mosquitoes are out there. And anything you do like that is great. We encourage as much of that as, as possible. How the courts ruled on this was any application of pesticide to waters of the US or for South Dakota to be any waters of the state needed to have permit coverage, which meant if you have a creek going through your backyard, and there's some emergent vegetation coming out of the water that you want to spray, you go out and get some Roundup, spray it, you'd have to have permit coverage. And you'd have to be able to follow the requirements of the permit. We thought that was a little bit overreaching, so we did a few things. We said that there has to be water present, and it has to be waters of the state. So if there's water in a field, and it's, just because it just got done raining, that's not considered waters of the state. However, seasonal water bodies or row ditches are still considered waters of the state.
They are?
So...
That was my question. So a ditch that we have high water, and we have runoff, fills up, and may, you know, there's a ditch over by my, my house that is full of water most of the time. Right now, it's not, but most of the time in the spring through the summer, it's full of water and can certainly be a place, you know, for mosquito larvae and stuff to hatch. Would that be considered waters of the state, then?
It, it would be waters of the state. Because we wanted to have the permit to be as easy to follow as possible and have the fewest requirements, you know, it's, it's here to protect waters of the state. If there's no water there, there is nothing really to protect. So the requirements are only effective if it's waters of the state and there's water present. So if that, if that creek or a row ditch is currently dry when you spray for mosquitoes, then you wouldn't have to worry about any requirements in the permit.
If I may, just for clarification, once again, the delegate states, are you saying that EPA steps aside enforcing the rules and regulations and allows our state DENR to do so?
The, the vast majority of the time, yes, yeah. In non-delegated states, EPA would come in, write the permit, talk to the applicator, and EPA would be part of the permitting process. In South Dakota, we issue those permits.
Okay, and that, that covers insecticides, herbicides?
Yes, it does.
Fertilizers, all of those things?
Yes.
Okay, my next question is, is, you know, the Clean Water Act's been in court since it was passed in nineteen seventy-two. But now we're talking about waters of the state. And then what point in history do you start bumping heads with the Corps of Engineers over this type of jurisdiction?
I have not run into that situation at all. The Clean Water Act is for waters of the US where EPA has authority. Since we're a delegated state, it's waters of the state, and we have a little bit different definition than the, the federal one.
But it, so is, is any flowing water, creek, stream, rivers, within the boundaries of South Dakota considered waters of the state in this agreement, or?
Actually, the handout that I gave you earlier?
Yeah.
Had a handout that has a definition of waters of the state.
Yeah, and I haven't had a chance to read it in entirety, but that maybe answers my question, and I apologize if it does.
That's fine. According to South Dakota codified law...
What, what number are you on there, Jonathan? What number?
Number nine.
Okay.
In the handout. Codified law SDCL thirty-four A dash two dash two... Codified law SDCL thirty-four A dash two dash two twelve has definition from waters of the state. All waters within the jurisdiction of the state, including all streams, lakes, ponds, impoundment reservoirs, marshes, watercourses, waterways, wells, springs, irrigation systems, drain systems, not other, all other water, well, all of the bodies of accumulations of water surfaced underground, natural or artificial, public or private, situated wholly or partially within the, or bordering upon the state. Which is a, a pretty broad definition. Has nothing to do with ownership, has to do with the, the type of water. So, it doesn't matter if it's a, a, a federal, on federal land, or a city park or private residence. The ownership doesn't matter, which is one point of confusion a lot of times.
Mr. Chair, I guess my question is for our department head and applicator. Does this, do you feel any better about this? Are you any more confident that you could maybe spray?
After talking to Jonathan yesterday, it did ease my fears somewhat. However, we're still under the Clean Water Act permit, and it, it would just not be real, real good to run into a, a problem because of, of what the penalties are. However, I, you know, I'm, I feel as though being able to talk to SDSU about numbers like we used to do. And then Jonathan, I, you know, when I read this permit and what I'm going to do, I'm going to run some copies off and put them in your boxes that I, I've given, let's see, I think I gave you one. But, that way they, you can read what, what I am reading or was reading, or was and am reading, and see why I've come up with the determination that I did. I do want to say one thing, however, in the last two years, I haven't just went to sleep on this mosquito misting program. The crew and, and myself did take the misters to Sioux Falls for a mosquito misting work, workshop each year to have them recertified. The EPA requires that. There's a label put on them that says they've been recertified, and, and so I did have them recertified thinking that if the, if this Clean Water Act permit got rescinded with the farm bill, they'd be immediately ready to be used. That's not the way it's gone, and it still hasn't gone that way. And this, May first and second, there's another mosquito workshop in Sioux Falls, which I'll be putting the paperwork in for so we can take them down and get them recertified again. But I, what I'd like to do is, is discuss this with my board, my weed board, and my commissioner liaison, Commissioner Miller, and at our meeting on the eighth of, of April, and make a determination at that time.
Danny?
Gary, one question. You, you just referred to the EPA requires you to certify and calibrate and so on and so forth. And, and you're saying that DENR is, is handles these state regulations for waters and, but we're dealing, you, you see where I'm coming from, is Gary's saying, okay, EPA's making us do this, but, but you're saying, I guess I'm just-
There are federal requirements and there are state requirements.
Right.
With any kind of situation like this at all. So, I am not fully aware of all requirements at the, the federal level. This permit has to do with pesticides being applied to waters of the state. So, there's other requirements through, through the State Department of Agriculture, depending where you're applying also, game fishing parks has requirements if you're applying on, on their land. So, there's a lot of other requirements that go on with the application of pesticides in general and specifically in different areas. And this permit only is, is addressing to waters of the state.
But, but you do see our concern is, okay, now we're dealing with this federal agency that says you have to do this, and then, and the state permitting is a whole, so you would be our line of defense, basically, to the, if we receive that application from you and, and we're following all your regulations and rules, then if they wanted to sue somebody, they'd be suing you for, coming after you for giving us a permit also. I mean, it's, it's-
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, I mean, so you are at risk just like we are. And I think, I think it's a good idea, Gary, that, that you go back to your board, talk about this, and I think it's cleared up a little bit, the permitting for you, and I think, you know, but I still think your board needs to come back with a recommendation.
Like I said, FIFRA was doing a great job. It's the position of South Dakota Art, Environment, and Natural Resources that as soon as we don't need to have this permit, we're going to get rid of it. So, if, if it's a law requirement through some federal law, court case, whatever, then we'll get, we'll get rid of it. Some states had permits in place already for this application, but not very many. So, we, we would like to see FIFRA be the end-all, be-all for this again. So, we, we don't want this permit to stop anybody from applying. Applications are necessary for farming, public health, recreation, general, you know, well-being of life. So, we, we don't want to stand in the way. And the applicator's been doing this for many years, he's an excellent expert on it, and I trust his judgment on, on when is it needed and how much. There are label requirements that say you cannot apply more than a certain amount. Some pesticides you're allowed to apply to waters, some you are not. They all have requirements on them. And they also go through different species of, whether it's birds or other plants, that, that might be affected adversely. And you are required to, to be aware of those and not apply where you, you shouldn't apply them. So, it's, FIFRA is, is very thorough, and we have this permit because we have to. And we have the most minimum requirements that the EPA would allow us to, to have with this. So, when, when other applicators have come to me and said, well, I have concerns with how much to spray or where, try to do what doing today is, and come out, have a discussion and, and see what the right course of action is. And the DENR is, is very friendly, we, we try to be. We don't want to do enforcement. That, that's the last thing we want to do. If there is a problem, we want to come out, do some communication, some assistance, and a lot of times it's just knowledge of what the requir, requirements are and, and how to deal with them. And, so we, we try to go that route. And if, you know, say, an applicator still doesn't follow them, or is things getting worse, you know, then, then we can escalate as needed, but we really try not to do that at all.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to comment, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jonathan, for coming out, and I do feel a little better about this with DENR as our buffer, as you will. But I, I appreciate you taking the time to come out and talk to us about this because, you know, we all were pretty leery about having the county be liable for hefty fines. But on the other hand, we, if we can spray, we would, you know, we'd like to be able to do that for our citizens, so, thank you.
You are quite welcome. If you do get any complaints, feel free to send them our way, or Department of Agriculture, between the two departments. We can help out with a lot of concerns that the public has. A lot of times it's misinformation or misunderstanding. Oh, I, I saw a plane doing pesticide on, on a field a mile away, and now my tree's a little bit sick. Well, you know, what kind of, we could talk to the applicator, find out what they're using, and we can do a lot of legwork and take the burden off of, of the counties and cities.
Okay, well, thank you, Jonathan, appreciate it very much. Cleared up some things for me as well, and I just want you to know that we've been, been sharing the concerns that our, that our supervisor has in regards to this and going with his recommendations because we didn't want to create any liabilities. And, so Gary, I want to thank you for your diligence in this, and we're looking forward to your board having their meeting and bringing a recommendation back. Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our regular business is action to approve Resolution fourteen thirteen. This is adopting the Brookings County Pre-Disaster Plan. Short little document. Chair would entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Krogman. He beat you to it, Danny. Is there any questions? Well, I learned a lot about Brookings County. It's quite a document, you have a pretty complete report, isn't it?
Yes, sir. It's, and it's an all hazards plan, has the resolution states. You know, the title of the plan's pre-disaster mitigation, and it was brought to my attention that in the resolution it talks about all hazards. Well, that, that's why it does, it covers all hazards. If you notice, in the plan, some of the people that attended, we have resolutions on file like from Sioux Valley Electric, because they're so concerned if there is an ice storm that hit anywhere in the county, their poles would have to be replaced. By them signing on the plan and having a resolution that'll, that would allow, easier to get, get federal funding to assist them.
Any other questions?
I just, you know, scanning through this and certainly didn't read every line, every page of the very lengthy document, and, but the responsibility of our board is to assure there is a, by this resolution, there is a plan in place and it's been updated. And this only goods through twenty seventeen?
Yes, sir.
And it has to be, has to be reviewed again?
So, common sense wise, probably, you know, next year, twenty fifteen, we'll have to start looking at it, looking at it, and then twenty sixteen, get serious about it and to have it in place by twenty seventeen.
But I think with the one that was completed before that you were involved in, that it's really just changing the numbers of, the numbers that need to be changed. I mean, everything else, and then having the, the public notices and things like that.
And the, well, and what happened from there was the formatting is totally different than what was done in two thousand and three.
Yeah. Okay, and this has been reviewed?
FEMA, it actually has been approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Region Eight, which is our higher headquarters.
And that's what we were waiting for before we-
Correct. We was waiting for that approval. Once that approval came, then we went to the small towns, all the municipalities, and, and we just now finally got our final, final one.
Do, do you see in this document, I won't take too much time, do you see in this document anything that concerns you? I mean, I noticed some of the municipalities don't have certain things that, you know, that would be nice to have, or they, they have a wish list of things they'd like to have into the future. Are those things that those communities perceive as being something they're going to do, or just realizing this is a cost if we want to do it? Or what is the intent of the document? Is the, the federal people expect that to be done, or they just?
No, what, what it is, it's, it's almost like a dream list. Such as us, in, in Brookings County, we have talked, I've sat here for ten years, is on the drainage, being in charge of drainage, of talking about getting water from the city limits of Brookings down to the Big Sioux River. Well, that, we could never apply for any grants on that because we never had it in any plans. If you notice, it's in our pre-disaster mitigation plan now. Now, we can take that plan, and if, if there is mitigation money available, we can, we can see if we can draft something up, or at least start to study and, I mean, it might take twenty years to get it, get it done, but at least now we got the mechanism to start looking at it and apply for federal funds to help us look at it.
I have a question here. I see a plan of adoption, so after we adopt this, you're going to each town, Aurora, Brookings, Bushnell, and have them adopt it also?
No, sir. It's already been adopted by Sioux Valley Electric, Aurora, Brookings, Bruce, Bushnell, Elkton, Sinai, Bogota, and White.
So, we're the last ones?
But, because it's a county plan, yes, sir.
Okay. And everybody was okay with it? Obviously, everybody?
By all means. As you can tell, it, it's been going on for two years. I was involved with it when I was not in emergency management. That's how we got the, the ditch going to, you know, we have, it's been an ongoing process, and it's, it's just the way plans are nowadays. It takes, takes years sometimes to produce a good plan, and you're always putting, adding pieces together. And it's a living document. I mean, if something comes up that we want to add to the pre-disaster mitigation plan next year, we, you know, the plan is the type of plan that we can add to it.
Somebody from First, according to the agenda, somebody from First District went to all these meetings and explained this as a, were approved by their particular boards, correct? I mean, that, that was, it looks like First District was attending pretty much all those meetings?
Yes, by all means. Luke, Luke Mueller was the main person in, in charge of this particular one. And I attended what meetings since, since I've become in charge.
Question?
I was going to make a motion. Did we make one yet?
Yeah, we do.
We did.
Okay, no further comments? Please call or roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item B, we got a couple of minutes, which just shouldn't be too tough. It's the Agreement fourteen twenty-nine between Brookings County and Election Systems and Software LLC. Chair would entertain a motion. Moved by, moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Is there any comments, discussions?
I gave you my staff report. This is the company that we've been working with since I have been here, and they're fantastic to work with. They actually kind of subcontract with a company out of Minnesota that I can send them an email and get a response within minutes and have my questions answered, and they're fantastic, so. I don't know that there's anybody in, another county in the state that doesn't use this firm either, so.
Okay. If we talk real slow, Commissioner Wyeth, we'll get back. Ryan? Ryan, don't you have a question? Well, Tom had to make a quick exit, and then we'll, we'll call him.
My hearing aid does not do well in open spaces like this, so I'm going to have some difficulty with hearing.
Okay.
I apologize.
We're, we're waiting for Commissioner Wyeth to step back in the room.
No, I need to get back where I was.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
You're fine. Tom? We're, are you ready to vote? Okay, please call or roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a ten-thirty scheduled item today, and I guess the, the different meetings that we go to, we discuss the mental health of our populations much more than we have in the past. And having previously served on that board, back when it was East Central Mental Health, I'm well aware of the services provided. Then Commissioner Wyeth has been reporting, and we had the opportunity at our Rotary Club to have Mike come and talk to us, and he had a brief presentation, but it was very informative about some of the changes they're doing in their programming, and I thought it would be well for not only our board members, but the other folks present here, as well as our viewing audience, to kind of bring us up to date, and you understand, you recall what you gave us at Rotary, and just a, a few-minute presentation like that? And if our board has some questions, then it'd be very informative. So, Mike, at this time, I'll turn it over to you, and you can allow to, for our viewing audience to introduce who you are and who you're representing, so we get the names correct.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, these mics are kind of directional, so you got to speak into them.
Is that okay now?
Yeah.
Okay, two of the people up there are my neighbors, so I know both of them, and of course, Tom is on the board. And I've, I've been here before for Commissioner Falcon and Commissioner Larson. I'm Mike Forghey, I'm the Director of East Central Behavioral Health. I've been there about seven years. February two thousand and seven is when I arrived. We've made a significant amount of change at East Central Behavioral Health in the last seven years. In fact, the, the biggest share of the actual change has happened over the last couple of years. Most of the first five years was getting the planning done, preparing, et cetera. Some of the biggest things that we've done is increased- Some of the biggest things that we've done is increased services to children and families by about twelve hundred percent over the, the seven years that I've been here. We're providing services in all the Brookings schools now, uh, with staff actually in the schools. We have staff in Sioux Valley Schools and Elkton Schools and also the Dubrook Schools. And so, we're, we're available and in the schools and all the districts that are in the county. In addition, we provide the mental health services for head start throughout the twelve county area, uh, working together with ICAP. And so, you know, that goes all the way from Big Stone City down to Sioux Falls. We're providing all the mental health services that they are required to have. We've expanded all of our service options. In addition to, you know, the fact that we've expanded, uh, that by far the majority of our services are provided in the home or other community settings. Outside of, uh, the groups that we have for substance abuse, about ninety percent of our services are provided outside the office, somewhere in people's homes, other places in the county and, and surrounding area. And so, as you can see, I mean, this is just a thumbnail sketch, but we've really made a concerted effort to be a resource throughout the county and throughout the area. What the national statistics showed and the reason we started working with the schools is in any school year, about twenty-two percent of the children in the schools, children and adolescents in the schools have a need for mental health services. That pretty well tracks with our experience over the last two years providing services in the Brookings schools. As you can imagine, there's more need as kids get older. Teenagers are always the, the fun ones to deal with, but, you know, we are expanding services significantly and, and by the way, all this, uh, service in the schools has been with the participation and assistance of United Way. And so, it really is a joint program. The two newest things we've done and that's, they've been over the last couple of months that they've actually come to fruition. One is getting staff into the Boys and Girls Club. That's a, they serve about, uh, two to four hundred people a day, kids a day, depending on the, the day and whether school's in session or not. And they have not had access to mental health services in the club. Right now, we will have a staff member there one day a week and it looks like that will be expanding too. Uh, and the second is we've been working together with Brookings Health System for several years to, uh, learn how to and move forward with having our staff be accredited to provide services in the system. Last month, Jason Merkley and I signed an agreement that allows East Central Behavioral Health to credential its own staff and our staff, our ancillary, auxiliary staff to the Brookings Health System for mental health and substance abuse services. And so, you know, that, not that any of those things, um, make it so that we make more money, but they do make it so that we're providing more services and more availability for services. We've already, just in the last month, since we've completed the credentialing agreement, we've had a couple of pretty significant difficult situations happen with the Brookings Health System where the doctors and our staff and the nurses were able to work together and, and mitigate the issues. And so, really, it was a very important thing to get done and it's been something that should have been done long ago and it's a matter of how to get there. So, have a map for it. As I said, this is a thumbnail sketch, so I'd certainly be glad to answer questions.
Mr. Chair, in, in all of your outreach programs, have you had to add staff?
We've had to add staff since I got there, but, you know, when I came, uh, we had two open staff positions and it was very, very difficult to get staff in. Uh, we were a pretty traditional mental health center, um, had some earning issues, et cetera. Yeah, we've added staff over the years. We've got, um, what, twelve full-time staff now, uh, three of whom are support staff. And then, we have, uh, contracting agreements with a physician assistant, with a psychiatrist, and with two other therapists and, and educator. We provide all the, the underage drinking classes, which is what we use the educator for. Uh, with anyone under twenty-one who is arrested for underage possession ends up usually in our classes, sometimes several times. The, the positive thing about those folks is, you know, it's gonna succeed because they're all gonna turn twenty-one.
[laughing]
You have a question?
Well, I was gonna let you, uh, Mike, why don't you kind of explain why we have to give you money?
Sorry, Tom.
And, Mike, explain how we have to, uh, give, we give money, the city gives money and maybe you could kind of go your finance and your operational, uh, that, yeah, I think we make money on those, uh, drug, drug and alcohol classes. That's a little moneymaker, but generally speaking, um, the funding mechanism and, and why you need, uh, community support.
Funding is always an issue and, you know, the, number one, East Central is almost entirely funded on a fee-for-service, like if you go to your doctor or anybody else. We build insurance companies, Medicaid, the state of South Dakota, they're all, uh, fee-for-service contracts or fee-for-service arrangements. We got no grant money except what we get from the county, what we get from the city and, uh, for the last couple of years, the United Way. And so, you know, yes, money is always a problem, especially after, what was it, two years ago, when we got the major cut that took us back to the two thousand and five level of earning, level of rates. Uh, this year, we were operating at, back at the two thousand and eight level. You know, it looks like with the, uh, the budget that the legislature passed, our rates will go back to the two thousand and eleven level. So, essentially, next year, we'll be four years behind where we should have been.
Mike, you, you made a comment at Rotary that I found interesting and you'd, how you were providing your service, services within the building. But, and you used the example of someone coming in with, uh, an alcohol issue. And do you recall how you were saying, oh, you took a different approach to all the eyes and wherefore's before you made your final?
Yeah, we definitely, thank you, I appreciate that. You know, that's, that's one of our major changes that I almost always gloss over because, because it seems so second nature to us now. We've really changed how we go about initiating services with people. When I got there and, most of the state is still organized this way, uh, you know, it was even more glaring in our building. We got the medical people at one end of the building, we had the substance abuse people at the other end of the building. So, I used to say, well, here, we're prescribing drugs here and trying to get them off drugs over here. And the poor mental health people were in the middle not knowing what to do. One of the things that we have done very deliberately is moved to have a fully integrated, what we call a fully integrated service array, which starts with the initial assessment or intake. We don't categorize people for the reason they come in. That is, we don't assign people that come in for substance abuse issues to a substance abuse counselor or people that come in for mental health issues to a mental health counselor. People are, you know, we have people that are good at working with kids and families better than they are with, say, elderly adults, et cetera. And so, we do have a tendency to assign based on age and situation. Other than that, there's no focus on the problem. And so, what we see and what we found before we even made this change was about ninety percent of the people that came in for, say, child behavior issues, child and family issues, there was also substance abuse at some level going on within that family. And with the same, almost exactly the same statistics, about ninety percent of the people that came in for substance abuse issues, whether it's DUIs, et cetera, had some kind of mental health issues, child relationship, et cetera, going on in their family. So, it really, you know, made no sense whatsoever to continue to try and have ourselves be specialized when the people coming in had generalized problems and issues to deal with. As you can imagine, it's taken a lot of, of training, a lot of, uh, planning and supervision to get staff available to do that and also to have the capability to work together with one another as a team so that if the person that sees, for example, starts out with a child and family and sees a substance abuse issues, he or she may not be ready and capable of simply diving into that too. But we do have substance abuse experts on staff who can provide supervision and assistance so that we don't have to move people, move the people we're seeing around to one or another therapist, which I think is, you know, has really made it such that we're able to provide services much, in much more timely manner and be done with services faster too so that people don't have to, for the most part, people don't have to be there for the rest of their lives, which I think is, for most of the people we work with, that's a pretty important, uh, thing to have available. The other thing I talked about at Rotary that, that, you know, sometimes I get on my soapbox about it and really, uh, take off. When I started in this field, the belief was that autism occurred in about one in seventeen hundred births. Uh, last spring, the Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta, uh, made that number one in eighty-eight births. The, uh, best research comes from Korea, which is showing that, at least in their school system with the ten-year study, it was about one in thirty-sixth birth. And so, you know, what we're, what we're learning, what we know now and what we're, you know, trying to catch up with is the fact that people experiencing issues on the, on the autism spectrum are really, is really far more prevalent than any of us have been led to believe. One of the, the, um, stigmas that's associated with that is, you know, most of our knowledge, most of us in the general public, the knowledge we have of autism is the after-school specials, et cetera, where it really is somebody who's severely disabled, often, um, self-injurious, uh, usually low IQ, et cetera. What we've learned and what we're learning constantly is that people on the autism spectrum are throughout our society. You could probably walk into any, um, church, bar, anyplace where there's a crowd and the numbers of people there that are on the autism spectrum would surprise you. Interestingly, I, uh, my first grandchild was born a couple of weeks ago and I was there and, uh, we were having a meeting, a talk with the, the different people in the hospital and afterward, my, one of my daughters-in-law said, "What's wrong with that man, you know? He's, all he talks about is himself." And after, you know, all these years of, of now learning about and diagnosing and providing services to people on the autism spectrum, I was able to tell her what was going on with him. This was a doctor, who was, you know, was a very good doctor, was very highly respected. And, yeah, it was very clear that, you know, he is on the autism spectrum and you have to, if you want to get what you need from him, you have to deal with him in a specific way. So, we've worked very hard internally at East Central and with the school system, et cetera, to create the expertise on our staff for how to deal with people that are experiencing issues on the autism spectrum. Interestingly, the, the school's definition of autism and the mental health definition of autism were not the same until this year. The legislature changed the definition of, of autism spectrum so that it is exactly the same as the mental health definition. So, and that will have some effects over the next few years as we and the school system work together and provide services. You know, I want to be clear about that too. You know, most of the people that, by far the majority of the people that experience issues on the autism spectrum never need services. They don't need to have special education, they don't need to have mental health services. They're able to make it in school, they're able to make it in society, they work, et cetera. Um, you know, doctors and all that. The people that have the needs though, really have significant needs and it's important to identify those and to plan to get those needs met so that people can be successful.
Mike, uh, and the commission is, uh, you know, I didn't know anything until you guys put me on that board and it's been, you know, from ground zero. I just knew where the place was and, uh, I think the two impressive things is the outreach is the school and that kids just don't show up at school and then develop a problem at eleven o'clock. It developed the night before.
I'm sorry, Tom, I'm having difficulty.
Okay. That, that the problems didn't start at eleven o'clock in the morning, they were eleven o'clock at night before the kid showed up at school. And, um, so that outreach is a preventive, I mean, let's get these kids while they're younger than later and, and, um, most mental health treatment is more successful at a younger age than after people have gone out. And the other thing that is, uh, I find interesting and is rather than trying to create a housing for people that are struggling, is that we try to work with them in their environment, in their apartment, in their home and keep them functioning in our society rather than pulling them out. I, I, um, I guess I'm from the old school because I'm old and, uh, to see that working, I, I was very impressed, so.
Good. I think the, Mike, the one thing that I took back from the, from your pre, previous, uh, speech at Rotary was the fact that, that they used the, the, uh, the scenario of someone with alcohol issues. And how by getting all ends in the middle of the, of the building, working together is, before you treat that individual, first find out why. And like you were saying, you go to the root, you go to the family, you gotta get some history, you, and then you've got true knowledge about this individual and, and how you can go about helping them. Maybe you're gonna have to help some other family members or, or associates along the way. So, I, I thought that, I took that away as probably one of the most important things because finally, you're looking at, at the whole and not just one individual.
I agree with you. I think that's been the, not only the biggest change we've made, but the most important change we've made is we're, you know, we're providing the services that need to be provided rather than the ones that, you know, the state pays us for here or pays us for there. And that, and basically, that's how it was organized before. The state, uh, funds substance abuse services differently from mental health services, which is funded differently from medical services. And so, you know, that's how the building was organized, rather than being organized on what kind of needs people have, what kinds of capabilities they have, which I think is an important point too. That's very difficult to train staff to do and to, to do in our field, to, you know, stop focusing so much on the problems, but to focus on what people are able to do. You know, we all know intuitively, we know from, you know, being parents and, you know, everything else that we do in our lives, that it works much better if you help people with what they can do and use what their strengths and capabilities are rather than focusing on what they can't do or what they are having problems with. And so, that, that's been a very significant change too, is helping staff learn how, hiring staff who wanted to learn how to, uh, help people based on what their capabilities are.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
Um, are you, having been a former board member, um, are you still facing the challenges of it taking so long to receive payment from the state, which is one reason it's very, very important for us to help fund you?
Yeah, we have, we're, we have definite fiscal challenges. One of the things, this, you know, I laugh about it, but it's not exceptionally funny. One of the things that I've learned is when the state runs their, uh, bills, they run from the largest bills to the smallest bill. So, because we're a small center and we, you know, generally bill, you know, in the ten to twelve thousand dollar range, that's a tiny bill at the state level and so, we're running the end of the queue. Sometimes the run doesn't get done in one week and so, the people at the end wait until the next week. You know, if there's a holiday, they may wait two weeks or three weeks. And so, yeah, we definitely have a timeliness issue with getting payment. And then, the other part of, you know, fiscal issues is just how to fund and plan forward, you know, with no reserves. I mean, we, we're operating with no reserves whatsoever now and, you know, for example, summertime, we're often, if not always, uh, serving fewer people, we're billing less and, yeah, we've got staff to pay, we've got other work that needs to be done, including a significant amount of planning and we don't have the resource to cover that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm. Well?
We'll take anything we can get.
Tom, did you have a question?
Well, I'm a little under the weather, so I'm not catching everything, but did you introduce Nancy, our chairperson? Had to be, did you introduce Nancy, our chairperson? I, did you do that right away? I didn't catch that, I'm sorry.
Nancy is the chair and also Nancy spearheaded, uh, a very significant effort last year. Our roof needed repair, we needed a new furnace, um, we needed vehicles because of the amount of miles the staff were traveling. Nancy spearheaded an effort that funded all those things, got our roof repaired, got the new furnace in place and, uh, we were able to purchase two vehicles.
Oh, good.
You know, she did an excellent job with, uh, and she won the, the chair, chairpersonship of the board for it.
Good. Congratulations. Congratulations, Nancy. Good job. Well, Mike, I want to thank you very much for coming here and sharing this with us. I think it's always enlightening for us to visit with folks like you. And, you know, I'm seeing that, that we are finally accepting mental health for what it is. And as a society, we will sit down and have civil dialogue and talk about it, which we should have been doing many, many years ago. But we've finally accepted that it's, it's there. And we need to support those that are, have the ability to support those that have the issues. So, thanks for coming. Nancy, did you?
Yeah, I wanted to add something also, that we can't forget that East Central Behavior Health is there for everybody who says, "I'm fine." He did, Mike did a good job of listing off a lot of programs. But there is a time in everyone's life where "I'm fine" does not work for them. And, and the organization is there for those people. A big unspoken population of any community.
Good comment. Okay. Thank you both very much, and feel free to communicate with us often as you feel necessary.
I will do that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Fellow board members, I think we're down to item number ten, which would be the Deputy State's Attorney's report. Abby, do you have anything for the good of the order?
Just a couple of quick comments. Obviously, you have our report, so if you review that, come up with any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer those in the next couple of weeks. I had hoped to attend the spring conference that everybody went to in Pier last week, but I had an abuse and neglect trial, so that obviously takes precedence for me. We were talking about teen court, and I just kinda wanted to follow up on what Commissioner Falcone was asking about. We, the teen court coordinator and I are constantly working on ways to expand the program, and I'm a huge advocate of it. I think it is a great fit for certain kids. And a testament to that is, last night, I did a kind of a training session with some of the teen court students. We just did a kind of a mock attorney training program because the students also serve as a peer attorney. So, someone's a defense attorney and someone's a state's attorney. So, we had a group of about fifteen kids last night, and some of them were there just as volunteers, kids in the school that need more volunteer activities. And some were students that had been through the program and were done with their term, but kept coming back because they enjoyed it, their friends were in it, they, they just liked participating. And I didn't know what the reaction would be because not everyone loves being a lawyer as much as I do. But they were great, they did a phenomenal job, they had fun with it. And our goal was, even though you're coming back to volunteer and maybe it's not your case the next time, the kids can benefit from every single time they come to that, they're taking something away from it. So, just a really wonderful program, and I can't say enough good things about it. And I was also asked to speak at the Noon Lions Club yesterday. So, I did that and presented on our State's Attorney's Office and had a, some wonderful feedback there and a great, a great group there we've got. And then next week, I'm gonna be speaking with the Criminal Justice Club at SDSU. That was something they'd asked me to do a while back, and we had to reschedule, probably, I think, due to weather. Just speaking with those students on campus, they're kinda interested in a overall of what our office does. And then I, I'd filled Stephanie in on this and Clyde, but the Criminal Justice Department also asked me to teach a criminal law course on campus next semester. So, it'd be an evening course, it wouldn't conflict with work at all by any means, it'd all be out of work time. But I know Mr. Cradville had done things like that in the past on campus, so I felt like it was a wonderful opportunity, and I'm gonna jump at it. So, that's all unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Thanks. Stephanie, we'll move on to your report. I know you gave us a very thorough staff report, but you maybe have some comments or additions?
There's a number, yep, there's a number of items that were on the report that I need responses from the board on. The first one being whether or not anyone plans on attending the first district meetings that were included in your packet, if you need to meet RSVP to those? No? Do you need me to RSVP? Do you need me to RSVP?
I'm on the board, so they shouldn't have to RSVP. And Mike Bartley, I talked to him, and he's also our representative, both, both of us are going up.
Is there any other board members, so I know whether I have to do a public notice? Okay, the next one is the Intergovernmental Conference that's set for Monday, April seventh.
Yes.
Everybody?
Yep.
Stephanie already knew yours, but that one I'll have to do a, no, that one I had on the public notices. The next one is the Spring Workshop that was rescheduled on April second. The meeting times, you'll see the agenda in your staff report packet on your desk, are set from eight-thirty AM until five o'clock PM. So, if needed, I could make reservations for the night before. I need to know who's going. Stephanie?
I, I will not.
I have a date with Bob the night before, and they run late, so I'm not going.
But just, I don't know if you've called out, but I, I was out in Pier last week and talking to somebody who was gonna go, and they said there's like thousands of kids coming out there for some event, motel rooms are almost impossible to get. I don't know if you've made a call, but.
No, because I just got this, so I have not had a chance, I was pretty busy yesterday.
If you're looking for, remember Stephanie, they may not be available, they cautioned us.
They, they, okay.
If, if there's a, just let me know.
Anybody else going? Don or Ryan?
They go, but it'd be driving up that morning, so you don't need to worry about a room.
Should I call and register you, though?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
And Don, no?
Yes, that, no is correct.
I had originally put in a request to go to the earlier one that was canceled. I would like to have permission to revise that so that I could still attend next week. Our Commission Assistant Group is getting together, there's five other people in my position in the state. And we're gonna be meeting during one of the sessions that I've already heard three times. So, it's on that rule, recruiting of attorneys, if that's okay with the board. The next one is, as you already know, I'm sure you read it on there, Michelle's on vacation this week, so I gave notes of when our intern is in this week. I would still like to be able to have permission to take those three days off as vacation. And then I only received two responses for the strategic planning question that I sent out to the full board. I got, so if anybody else is wanting to give me guidance so that I can give that to the Cheeseman Foundation, so that, or Cheeseman Center, so that we can ensure you're getting what you want out of that session, I need responses from the board members, so I can put that information together. So, if you haven't done that yet, and you could please get that back to me.
Did you consider our conversation?
Yes, I wrote your notes down.
Okay.
I think I actually have three responses, actually, with yours, because I have yours in my book, so. Yeah, I've got a written one or an email from you. Yours was very comprehensive, Tom, so we're covered. We did, as you saw in an earlier email, I was asking for suggestions for assistance in our technical interviews for second round for our IT support specialist. Thank you, Tom, we were able to get someone because of people I had lined up. We could not ask because they had people applying from those companies. So, we did find someone to sit in, and we're gonna be doing those this Thursday. If you see Jason, please thank him for all the extra stuff he's putting in in the last week to two weeks. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Steph? Thanks. We'll go on to our commissioners' reports. And Dennis, I'll start with you this time.
Okay, well, I burnt up the highways between here and Pier last, last week. They did cancel the Spring Workshop, but they didn't cancel the Law Enforcement Standards Training Commission meeting, which was scheduled for that morning, so I drove in that snowstorm from Sioux Falls to Pier and got there and, and did have a Standards and Training Commission meeting. And it's really probably good, this meeting was scheduled, and I thought, well, I could go out for the state meeting and sneak into this standards meeting, it's a couple, usually a couple-hour meeting, and it lasted about eight hours and got out of there about four o'clock in the afternoon. So, it's a good thing it worked out the way it did. So, we had a couple hearings that, that were quite lengthy and, and had to make decisions on those. And then I turned around and went back. So, I drove back on the nineteenth, and on the twentieth, I drove back out again because I didn't have anything to do for a day and a half in Pier, and went to our Work Comp Board of Directors meeting, and a very good meeting also. And again, we, we deal with the same things, we've got funds and investment funds, and that was one of our big conversations of, you know, how can we make more money in our investments and still protect the pool's money? So, that was a topic. Then I did get back just in time to have a root beer float with Katie's last day, and that was a nice event. I think any time that we have employees, it's, you know, recognition is always, always a good part of employee retention and into the future and so on, so attended that, and that was it. Stephanie?
On March eleventh, I attended Ron's root beer float going-away party. He already has been missed, I think. On March thirteenth, I attended the work session with SDSU Extension and the Extension Board. Hopefully, we accomplished some things. I know that I received some education there. On March seventeenth, I attended the eight-county meeting. And there were, where new officers were elected, and we heard a legislative update from Senator Teedman and Representatives Holly Peterson and Tyler. On March twenty-first, I also attended Katie's root beer float party. And I'm sure she has already been missed, they were two good employees. And I'd like to, to publicly thank them for their service.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah. Busy couple of weeks. Had ICAP on Wednesday, the twelfth, and got into the early head start, information and different stuff, and certification and all that kinda stuff for the federal funds for that. So, that was good. Attended the work session with the county extension of four H, which I thought went well also. Got a good communication again, and I think, hopefully, we can move forward through solidifying the goals and objectives of that organization and solidify it and improve it, I think, which we're all here for. Then on the seventeenth, we had the eight-county meeting, which was good, listened to our legislators. After that, had the BDC meeting, which we had a presentation from Doug Warmerdolph from SDSU Vice President of Student Affairs, Off-Campus Housing Market Analysis, they redid. And so, he had talked a little bit about that and, and gave us an update of where that was, and that was a good discussion. And then I also, they gave us the charrette results. This is a draft there, but they gave us a chance to look at that. We'll be able to use that for our strategic planning. We'll also take a look at that, but it will be a good piece of documentation for us to use in that aspect. And then I have, I need some help. I'll be leaving out of town tomorrow for the national hockey tournament, and I have a hospital board meeting on Thursday, the twenty-seventh. They actually moved it to five o'clock, they moved it up a little bit. So, I won't be able to attend. If somebody else is able to, to make that, we're fine, we can't, you know, that's okay, too, I guess. But I did alert them that I won't be there, and I would be letting them know if somebody else would be, so.
I'll take a swing at it.
You wanna do that? I will.
I'll be fine.
Yeah, okay.
I have domestic abuse, or I wouldn't.
No, I'll, I'll let them know, Tom, that you'll be coming. Again, it's at five o'clock in their conference rooms north of the lobby there. So, we'll go from there, so that's about it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Tom? Yeah, Tom, both, both Tom and Ryan, you need to speak directly. You guys are soft-spoken, and you're hard to hear, and then sometimes our viewing audience can't hear you as well.
Yeah, well, we're trying to keep everything a secret, so.
Yeah.
Attended the four H meeting, which I thought was, gained more knowledge and got me to think of more questions, like a lot of times when you find something out. The Sioux Valley meeting with the legislators, later that day, at East Central Behavioral Health, and you got the picture there. On the twentieth, there was a planning and zoning comprehensive plan meeting, and I did not attend. I went and visited with Megan for an hour or so the next day. They're gonna meet again probably another month. They have, they brought the township maps back and tried to update them. And probably the best discussion is the different descriptions of the zoning, or not, zone's probably the wrong word, areas, agricultural area, and different uses, open areas. And that was pretty encouraging, I think that's gonna help define it. And they're using the old plan to move forward with, so that should make things move a little faster. There'll be more coming, though, I mean, there's still that one big controversial issue just laying out there that you all have plenty of opportunity, and that's the thirty-five acre rule. And some of our variances that we have, they've been needing because of certain ordinances that we have in place. And that'll be coming down the road. And then I attended Katie's root beer, didn't have one, even though it's my favorite thing. But I want to thank Stephanie for representing the commission at so many different things and, and take care of our employees, our, our employees like that. And, and just like the hospital, I mean, courthouse, open house and things like that. She represents us very well. Okay, if you've got a second, Growth Partnership had a meeting, and I'm gonna pass down, this isn't part of them, but, well, it's part of them, not the Growth Partnership. It's, obviously, Kevin Kephart is on the, out there, I mean, part of that board. And, and research, of course, what goes on, SDSU is a big part, what goes on that campus. But if you got a second, I got a little report bringing up today.
Go ahead, yeah.
Because I have them. Okay. They've lost a couple tenants, and you think, holy buckets. Well, one did go to California, but the other couple have moved to other parts in the community. And so, they're incubating out. They have eighteen thousand square feet of leasable space, and it's up to eighty-four percent of it's occupied currently. They're working on a potential client that would bring initially thirty, thirty-five jobs and maybe a hundred and twenty-five for the Lloyd Building. And that's been a three-month project, but it isn't in and over till it's over and it's moving forward. So, that's a big step to get that building rented out. They are, two other projects may lead to new buildings in the park. And so, that's, we're looking for a letter of intent from both of those. Green Energy Projects, Products is locating, it's a Minnesota company that will be offering internships and special research opportunities, SDSU, it's primarily solar power. Sud, Sud, I never pronounce them right, Sudenga. Have you ever come across that, Donnie? It's an ag company, S-U-D-E-N-G-A. Huh? You ever used their products?
Sudenga, I think.
Okay, I'll go with that. All right. They're a subsidiary of Diversified Technology, and they're into grain movers and all kinds of ag engineering type of milling things. And they'll be using quite a few students in the ag engineering field, and some with chemistry and bio, to work with them in developing new products and doing research. Another company from Iowa, and dealing with environmental energy, is looking to move. And let's see, we had another national company, look at our involvement with the university in animal science area. One of our current clients, that's from Chicago, engineering company, is actually expanding out there. So, there is a lot going on. And it's not a perfect world, but we're heading in the right direction.
I would guess probably some of the activities at the Animal Disease and Diagnostic Lab up there, and how that program is maybe changing a little and evolving is probably gonna fit hand in hand with some potential research opportunities at, that would be carried on at the research park, along with the regional effort regarding the new swine research unit.
Well, several departments have really stepped up. Of course, I mentioned the previous meeting pharmacy, and there's several leads coming off that discussion that will proceed into the pharmaceutical area. And I'm trying to think of, well, the nutrition people into products that would be value-added. And then coming up is, we've begun discussions with more research and development in products in the dairy industry, which, funny thing, between bell brands and everything, and our beautiful. beautiful dairy plant up there. So there, there's a lot of interest by the university in continuing in research and in product development, so.
Good. Good report. Any questions for Tom? Okay, I guess I'm like most all of you, I attended the 4H work session, and I, with everyone else, I think everybody got a better understanding of, of the who's and the whys and the hows and how things are operated. And then I had the eight county meeting, and I think that pretty well covers it. I'll be smart on environmental protection in a couple of days. Okay. Is there anything else to bring forward at this time? If not, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, one and all.